October 22nd, 2009, will the minutes take or please call roll?
Alderman Shaki.
Here.
Alderman Winger. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Caddella.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Lewitin.
Okay, we have a quorum present. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 8th, 2009 meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. And we're going to take things just a little bit out of order. We're going to move on to item number six, report and recommendation, the commuter coin box purchase option. I think we're going to hand the microphone over to Chief Benowitz.
Thank you, Alderman Caddella. You should have in your packet a memo dated October 18th with regards to this matter. Currently, in summary, we have coin boxes there. It was approached by Alderman Wesley. The current coin meters that we have there were purchased in 1995. He was looking at the possibility about with new station being built and being hopefully going to be open in December that we look into some coin machines. We did get a price for two coin machines from our current vendor. Just kind of backtracking a little bit, keep in mind those were put in there in 95. They currently are obsolete. And we are running two to three service calls per month on those on a service contract with the vendor. This might be a good time for us to take a look and revisit this. We, the machines that we are proposing for there are standard with regards to what's up and down the line with Metro and at Metro lots, so that we do have some standardization of what's available to the clients. For the two machines, the cost would be $26,000. We would also have the capability to have software, link them back to the police, or back to the city facility here, that would be able to have us analyze and also make any price adjustments without having to have the service people come out and service that. Also, we were able to convince them that they can extend, usually it's a 90-day service and labor. They're willing to go till February, or correction, April 2010. Total price for both of these machines would be $27,560. We've also attached to that memo, a survey that we conducted with regards to the fees in the surrounding Metro lots. As you can see, we are somewhat low. We would be also recommending, if the council so wishes, that in the future, at a future date, that they raise the rate from a buck and a quarter to a dollar fifty, and the monthly pass from $55 to $61.75, I believe it is. And that would be consistent with what's going on around us. Also, I know that there is some interest with regards, and I think Brad was going to try to find that from finance, but we have currently about 144 per month people that use the commuter lot on a quarterly basis. We have about 170 per day with regards to the actual metered daily rate. We believe that it would take us somewhere in the area of about 17 months, if there was a fair increase that's proposed, to recapture the cost for these new machines. In closing, just keep in mind that these machines have been there since 95. Much of the, much of the material is starting to become a little bit scarce. So, we feel that this might be a good time to take advantage and of the changes that we're making there and make sure that the machines are in line with the new building that's being proposed. John Forrest pointed out to me, I'd like to just make note that the labor and maintenance on these machines would be provided by the company that would be furnishing these to us until April of 2012. So, instead of the 90 days, you can see they're taking that out well into the future, where we will not have to look at any type of a maintenance fee for those. That's it briefly, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Actually, I have two things, and then Alderman calls, and then Alderman Wesley. First, just an observation and maybe a personal request on the rate increase. I think it might not be appropriate to increase the rate until the construction is over and the, you know, the inconvenience of having, of our commuters having to deal with that is over. That's just a, you know, personal opinion.
Just on that note, we did talk with finance about this. One of the key dates we might want to look at is in April of 2010. And if you wish to go a little bit longer, then I would look at four months after that, so that we can have that commensurate with the quarterly passes.
Okay, that's fine. And then the other thing is, can we talk a little bit about where this may come from, from the budget? So, if we were to approve this tonight, we know where it's coming from?
This would come out of the RTA Parking Lot Fund, a separate line item other than the building itself. But the funds, Brad Wilson assured me that the funds are there and we have that available.
Okay. Alderman calls.
I got a question. Can we find out how many people are from out of the city?
I see that Brad Wilson's entered the room, and I think he has that answer for me.
I know. I asked him before.
Thank you, Alderman Coles. The last two quarters being October to December of this year, and then prior to that, would that be July to September of this year, we sold 223 passes, which is the maximum that we can sell. In the current quarter, we're in 93 of those passes were Wooddaleans, 130 were non-Wooddale residents. In the previous quarter, 92 were Wooddale residents, and 131 were not Wooddale residents.
Can I, I'd like to make a suggestion that we look into a non-resident pass, because we're spending a million point, we'll say a million point three for a new station, which is supplied for the people of Wooddale. And I think, once it's done, it might be nice to have some of the people that live outside of Wooddale help us pay for the maintenance of the lot and everything else. Maybe a suggestion, maybe a $10 raise, or something like that. We can vote on it if...
We can certainly, we can certainly... Look at that, that might present a couple of operational issues. But once again, I think we can maybe see what we can do. And keep in mind that the, the raise rate that we are proposing is like $6.75 for a four-month period of time. So, you can see, it is, it is a nominal increase. It's not a substantial hefty amount, but it is proportionate to what would occur with the daily rate. Good, thank you.
Alderman Wesley.
Yeah, I brought this to Frank's attention, since we're spending that kind of money at train station. The question, Frank, and I don't know if you cover this, those also are going to be able to be used for credit cards too, am I correct?
Yes, that's where the software will come in handy. Currently, right now, we have a debit card program, but you have to come to the city to get it replenished. Since we put those machines in 95, that was the only game in town. Nobody is using that function whatsoever. One other thing that we are looking at is we currently have three machines there. One of the machines is off on the platform to the eastern portion of the property. We will be only having two machines which are attached to the building. We have provided for the contingency in the future that we have it plumbed out with the electrical and the necessary connections, so that if in the future we wish to expand that to a third, we have that capability without having to go through major construction or anything like that.
Follow up, Alderman Wesley.
Another question. What is the timeline for these after we approve this? How long? And I believe, John, maybe you can answer the question first. We have already planned it on putting the old ones back in temporarily, if the new ones aren't available. Am I correct? Is the software going to be still there? Is electrical still going to be there for the old ones?
Talk with the vendor today. These machines are assembled in the United States, down in Florida. He is, he is assuring us that if we order within the next week or two, that they will have them here by December 15th, which would be prior to the opening of the station.
Mr. Mayor.
As to Alderman Coles, great idea. My understanding is, we can't do that. As Metro funds, at least in part the train station, and they do it for Wooddale residents and non-Wooddale residents, we are prohibited from charging different rates. But maybe staff could check with legal and see if that's still true before they spend a whole lot of time and effort on it.
Alderman Wesley.
But Mayor, I believe the parking lot is owned by the city of Wooddale.
We also received a $250,000 grant years ago from Metro to resurface the parking lot. And as such, their rules would apply, unless you want to refund the 250,000.
But is Metro going to be willing to refund, to redo the parking lot again this year?
You'd have to ask them.
Okay. Alderman Coles.
I was just wondering, because it's, we have Itasca, Roselle, Medina, Bensonville, Franklin Park, Hanover Park, all on the same, all on the same line. Why, why, I mean, I realize that we, we got that, but they're using the same line. They're all, most of them have, have a non-resident fee. I know you said it's because we made an agreement with them, but that agreement was done, what? How many years ago?
I believe that was done about 10 years ago. Again, I may be wrong, but that's my understanding, that as we received federal and Metro funding, we can't charge different rates for resident or non-resident. But it's something we should look into and check.
Well, something we could call and find out.
Okay. We can certainly look into this, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Alderman Lewitin.
I was just going to ask for a point of information. In the brochure that was handed out to all the Aldermen, it shows that Itasca, Roselle, Bensonville, and Wheaton have different prices for resident and non-resident. I'm just, since you've already answered the question that it's, that it should be turned over for investigation, I'm going to take it that at this time, no one's 100% sure, and that we'll get an answer by the next meeting. Is that true?
I hope so. Okay. Alderman Police.
I got a question on the raises. Basically, from a dollar twenty-five to a dollar fifty a day, $55 to $67.50 for the quarterly. Basically, we're selling about a little over, well, one, one quarter was 196, the other one was 223. If you raise the rates, and all of a sudden now we become higher than Itasca, what percentage do you think we're going to lose if people are just going to drive over to Itasca and park over there?
Yeah, there's a, it's a different fare zone, so actually, the farther west you go, the fare rate goes up. So, we are the next zone down. As a matter of fact, Bensonville recently raised their rate up, and we did a very unscientific survey, and we found that we are starting to get commuters from Bensonville that are using our lot to try to save on the fee, and it's the same zone as Bensonville.
Yeah, Alderman Police.
Okay, so if we're starting to get more ridership here in Wooddale, that means we're going to start collecting more, more quarterly passes and whatnot. Wouldn't we make up some of that money, that proposed increase? Wouldn't we make up some of that extra by having extra people parking?
I guess past performance is no guarantee of future behavior.
Ooh, good answer. Yeah, Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, the 223 number of passes that we sell is actually the maximum number of passes that we can sell. So, again, with the relationship with Metro, even though it's our parking lot, we can only sell a certain number of permit passes. The rest have to be open for any fair person that wants to, any fair paying person that wants to go downtown, like, you know, take a day off of school to go downtown or whatever. So, we can't sell the entire parking lot with, with permit passes. We have a certain amount that can be sold for permits, and a certain percentage that has to be held open for non-permit people. So, that is the, the maximum number that we can, we can sell. And we did actually bump that up a little bit in the past, because the lot wasn't getting full. So, we were able to negotiate it a little bit higher. But that is currently the, the max number that we can sell. And to your question about Itasca, looking at the list real quick, Wooddale was the most concentration of people using the lot. I think there was one from Lombard, one from Itasca, and then Addison was the next largest, Elk Grove and Bensonville in descending order. So, there's only, I think, one person from Itasca using our lot currently. So, I wouldn't think there'd be a huge flush that way, especially with the different fare zone. What they'd pick up in parking, they'd, they'd pay in their monthly pass to Metro. So, effectively a wash as far as that goes.
Okay. If there's no more questions or comments, I'll make a motion to, if this is appropriate, direct staff to enter into a contract for the purchase and initial maintenance of two new coin boxes. Chief, is that what you're looking for?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. The next item, we're going back to number four, report and recommendation, the Lakota presentation for phase four. I see Mr. Clicker grabbing the microphone. Do you want to take it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Before we get to the Lakota presentation, I just wanted to show everybody a short video that was produced by the Illinois Department of Transportation. It highlights where IDOT has been with this whole process for the Western access, where they are now, and where it will be going shortly in the future. The, also, I wanted to show this because it also highlights that the, our efforts and our, and our planning are already taking effect, in that IDOT has recognized our efforts, and actually incorporates them into this video. So, with that, I'd just like to show the video. I'll have a few comments after it, and then we'll open it up for Mr. Lamont to make his presentation. presentation.[512.78]